It's 6:30 in the town of Reed Field, Maine, and let's begin this Select Board meeting by saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Welcome to this meeting. Oh, hello of the Reed Field Select Board. This is a basically an added meeting that we are doing this evening. And we're basically going to go right into Select Board communications. If anyone has anything to say, please use this time now.
I'll save it for the regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. We would like to move now to Town Staff Reports. First, we'll have the Treasurer's Report, then we'll have the Town Manager's Report. Again, just in case you're following along at home, these items are available on the website, reedfieldmain.org, under the Select Board tab. You can click on the Agenda. It'll give you all of the information if you're following along at home. But now we send it over to Eric.
Thank you, Dennis. I'll be brief. It's easy. The first meeting of the month or first month of the year, we always have year-to-date and financials or annual, monthly and annual, year-to-date are the same numbers. So this is an easy one for us. But it's also a very odd time of year when we have just one year data or one month of data. The numbers start to get look pretty squirrely. It's usually not until August, September that we start to see a bit more stability. And this year was particularly challenging compared to last because last year we were getting through the first wave of COVID. And so we had a lot of things happening. We had excise tax last year that was going through the roof. And we're doing plenty fine this year, but last year was enormously large. Also, we didn't commit taxes until August last year, and we committed them in July this year. So you look down at the numbers for revenues and it's, you know, 15,000% increase or something ridiculous like that. And it's because taxes, the $4.9 million or whatever it was in taxes was committed in August to July. So long story short, things outside of those very anomalous items look good. We did have a couple of extra journals early on as we did go through the tax commitment process because we had an issue with Trio. And we also had opening or beginning balance adjustments. So whenever you carry forward values from the prior fiscal year, those show up as beginning balance adjustments. And those are things like your cash reserve items. If there's any outstanding checks, things like that come over. So those adjustments show up and we had two or three sets of those as we worked through the month. But overall, it looked a pretty good start to the year. And I don't see anything that's alarming that can't be explained. So that's my Treasurer's Report. And my Town Manager's Report, well, before I get that, any questions on the Treasurer's Report for the month of July?
Can I just have a clarification? I'm sorry if it's now is not the time, but I just want to make sure. Have the Sunday hours at the transfer station stopped officially?
Yes, they have.
That's what I mean. I just want to make sure because I think it was this past weekend. Yeah.
It's between Memorial Day and Labor Day, not including those weekends.
Now, I got you. Thank you very much. I just want to make an announcement.
Just one point of clarification. We may have set the tax rate, but the revenues did not begin to come in until people start paying their taxes in September. So the fact is that we are living right now on our fund balance. And we are heavily dependent on a robust subscription rate for that for that first six months. And that's the way every town lives. But the fact is that we're living on fund balance right now to pay our bills. And the big one is the 300 and some odd thousand that goes to RSU 38, which supports our kids and our property values. But we're, we're, we're living on surplus right now.
That's a good point, Ralph, and I will note that we actually do have a healthy reserve of over 2 million in the bank as of into July anyway. And we typically do see a nice spike in September when people have their first half due. So we do have a dip in August, but then September comes along and we spike up and we go down again. Of course, borrowing can affect that as well if we have bond proceeds come in or large capital projects like, you know, 300,000 paving like we did. But you're absolutely right that those revenues, they show up as revenues in the accounting, but truly we look at the receipting to show, to show what has actually come in. That's a good point. Yeah. So any other questions on the Treasurer's Reports? Okay, so the Town Manager's Report, I don't know what happened to August. I don't know if you guys do. There apparently was, but I don't know what happened to it. But it's been very, very busy. I enjoyed most of my vacation. Not all of it, but most of it. And yeah, glad to be back and catching up on things. But I do have a tremendous amount of work to move forward. And we've got a lot of important projects. Preparing for the special town meeting has been quite an undertaking. But we can't lose sight of some of the other administrative functions that are happening. So I do want to just, you know, say again that I appreciate the work of the board. And I will likely be asking you for some help on little things here and there because, you know, that's how we get things done, especially with staff transitions. Anna Carl resigning a few weeks ago was a big challenge for us. She's going to be hard to replace, but we'll find somebody and we'll get back on track. I very much appreciate the work she has done for the town over the past five years and working in the position she has. And giving so much to the community, it's going to be hard to replace it. But again, it's one of those things we have to fill. And so we do have a maintenance position open if anybody has an interest or knows anybody who might be interested. We're absolutely looking for someone. We'll train the right person. There isn't much that we can't teach with that. And it's one of those positions you'll never get bored. There's always something different. And really taking care of that staff gap and then moving along with some RFPs are some big priorities moving forward. So that's just an interim update. And if you have any questions or anything you want to comment on, let me know.
Is there an outline at least for her job description?
Yeah, we've got a full job description. It doesn't have to be a moving target because it's a catch-all. It's one of those job descriptions that really has a lot in it. We exercise almost at will, but no, it's a, it's a very good job. Great benefits, and I hope someone, I hope multiple people apply and we can have some choice.
When will that be posted, Eric?
It's going to be this week. It'll be tomorrow or certainly no later than Thursday.
And is the ACO job part of that job?
That is. I'm going to be talking to the union about the possibility of putting that aside as a separate function because it did prove to be quite challenging to have a full-time employee also having to leave in the middle of work to go or it's all work, right? But middle of a job in order to go address animal control issues, plus the burden of having that and the weekend activities. I think it's a lot. And so I want to talk to the union about going back to the way it used to be, which was having that be a separate stipended position. Don't know where we'll get with that, but right now currently the animal control piece is part of that. But you have a year up to a year, I believe, to be trained. And it's, it's not that hard to get the skills if you have some familiarity with animals. So I'll leave it at that.
And I guess I have one other question. When will Shereen Gilman become our actual town clerk?
She is.
She is now.
She is now. Yeah, she's been for a few months. She was appointed. And I did correct that on the, on the most recent draft of the warrant. Because the head said, yeah, Kristen still. So, yeah. I thought that's maybe where you were headed with that.
Thank you.
All done?
I'm done.
All righty, sounds good to me. We're going to move on to public comment. If there's any members of the public who would like to address the Select Board, now is your opportunity or you may wait until next meeting. No one online and no one here in person. We will move on to new business. This is the sort of meat potatoes of the meeting tonight. We're going to move to item 22022, consider remote meetings by town boards and committees due to the COVID surge. We've allotted five minutes for this discussion. Eric, do you want to mention some of the statistics that were in our packet?
Yeah, this is just one way to look at it. There's a lot of different ways to look at this issue. But I guess I'll start off by saying that we did have some pretty significant concern expressed by members of our boards and committees wanting to get clarification on whether or not the board felt it was appropriate for boards and committees to be meeting remotely. There is no state mandate. And the emergency rules that had allowed that have been pulled. As you're all aware, we did adopt a policy that allowed for continued remote meetings under certain conditions. One of those is health risks. And so all of those things kind of flowed together. We have had over the last couple of weeks, significant increase. At the state level, we've seen numbers increasing fairly quickly. But looking at the county level, it's even more striking. At the end of last week, we went from basically zero to 60, tripling, almost quadrupling the amount of infections in Kennebec County going back 60 days. And so I believe there's a need for flexibility for the boards and committees to be able to meet remotely if they don't feel comfortable or have health concerns. I think that there's a justifiable health issue here. And so I guess the bottom line is they and I are requesting that the board formally authorize remote meetings until things get back to normal. And I really don't know if or how you would like to qualify that. So.
So is the question, should we meet remotely now? Is that what we're asking?
Well, it's two-part, really. I mean, the board always can, you have the discretion to decide if you, if you want to or not. But really, this is for the other boards and committees, the Comprehensive Plan Committee, the Planning Board, the Broadband Committee. The policy that you have allows for that, but it's a bit ambiguous on who makes that final decision. In my view, it is the Select Board, although you could delegate and say you leave it to the committee chairs to decide. Again, it's an option. They don't have to. But without some, some more substance behind it, they might not feel comfortable saying, well, I'm going to meet remotely because we're not, we're not feeling comfortable. And then they could be pushed back on that. So they wanted to have some kind of a, not a backstop, but to have the support of the board in making a decision on a public health issue.
Well, my inclination is to leave that up to the board, the board chair, whoever the chair of the board is to make that call. We have the policy in place already. And I certainly don't think that we should. I mean, I understand in terms of the umbrella situation, but I don't think we should speak for the individual committees that the chair presumably know them a little bit better than we would. I don't know. I don't know if we need to motion or this, but I would support that, having the chairs decide.
Are we talking about allowing committees and boards to meet hybrid? Or are we talking about allowing them to do full remote or requiring that it's full remote?
I guess the full gamut. I mean, it could be that some committees, and again, the chairs would know better what the health issues are.
Yeah.
Concerns. Yeah. So I think up to and included full remote, I would think is what is being requested.
Yeah, we have the policy in place. I don't see. Yes, man.
I think there's some boards where if you can be in person, the work is done. The communication, everything just seems to get to be more productive, more understandable. Like the planning board, if they're looking at a site plan, I think that was really messy during a recent meeting. If you've been vaccinated, if you don't have a fever, if you don't have, I mean, I don't know if we screen people at the door with the questions everybody's asked. There may be some boards that remote makes some sense. There may be some boards that it's so important that everybody understands the numbers, the graphs, the site plans, that maybe it's not feasible. And if someone does have a specific, like if they're high risk or they have illness that makes them vulnerable or they have a fever, you know, it can be on an individual basis. I don't know. I just think it depends on the, on the which board it is and the content of what they're discussing and sharing.
Yeah, I think the chairman's, the chairs of those boards would know in terms of how they can proceed. I also agree. I think it may simply be an issue of making sure that we're able to share the right documents and look at things on the screen. I think those sorts of things are always a part of any type of online experience. I know that having done, having performed online, one of the things that I think is really important is being able to talk about something and have people see it. It cannot, you know what I mean? And so I think we try to do a good job with Bill and all various, with bells and whistles here to do that. But, but I really, like I said, I agree with you. I think, again, only the chairs of those boards would know the, that the best in terms of the individual situations. Ralph?
I suspect that some of these chairs would like some guidance from us. And we do have a policy in place. And I think the overriding sentiment of that policy was in person unless dot, dot, dot. So we perhaps need to fill in those blanks in order to have a comprehensive policy that fits all boards and commissions or town operating procedures. If you leave it up to individual boards here, there, you're going to get a scattershot situation that may not, it may not be the correct overriding policy. So if we don't need to act tonight, I think we, we should, we should really think about this. I, I think the prevailing sentiment when we had this initial discussion was that in person is best. And my sentiment is that in person indeed is best, but we don't want to put anyone at risk. So can we continue in person with the separation protocols and the masking again to achieve that goal? I think we have a, we have a meeting coming up with board chairs in October. And if we don't have to set the policy immediately, we need to talk to them because otherwise we are going to be scattershot. And I think our function is to provide some overriding or not overriding, but at least some oversight and umbrella as how to proceed here versus leaving it up to individual boards and commissions.
Do we need to do a motion tonight, Eric?
Well, my feeling from talking to a few different chairs is that they would like to have some direction because, you know, just the last two, two weeks, we've seen a quadrupling of cases in Kennebec County effectively. That's, that's a lot and that has given a lot of concern. I mean, we're back to the numbers. We were almost at the peak of the pandemic.
Yeah.
So granted, there are differences. But the concern is there. And I think that the part of the reason that I wanted to discuss this was because of the urgency of the feelings that I was, you know, that were being expressed by some of these committee chairs, board committee chairs.
Now, do we have a representative sampling of the group? I mean, how many are there and from how many have we?
I mean, I guess I've heard from three or four.
Okay.
But we've got eight or nine, but they don't all meet regularly and some of them just, you know, yeah. We've got probably more than that. We probably got a dozen.
We certainly don't want anyone to be exposed and put at risk, especially even if they're vaccinated. But it seems to me we're, we're moving ahead without some concept of what it is that the individual boards and commissions want. If we've heard from three or four and there are nine or 10, are we going to be making a unilateral decision? Or can we just say in person unless you want to go zone?
Yeah. Ken?
Well, I have lots of different thoughts. There's always going to be infection. There's always going to be virus from some illness or bacteria that's in the air. And I don't want to live in fear. I don't want our town to live in fear. I think people have to make their own good decisions about what's best for themselves. I believe the policy we passed stated that people could meet remotely if they are out of town, out of state or if they are ill. So if people, you know, are feeling that they're immunocompromised, then they qualify already to meet remotely. I agree with Ralph. I think we ought to bring this up at the Chairs Committee, at the Chairs Meeting. And then let's make a decision after that. But how about in the meantime, we say that we, we strongly prefer that committees meet in person unless members feel that they can't attend for the reasons that we already have stated, which is fine then. So, you know, if everybody on a committee is in their 80s and they're all feeling at risk, then that committee would meet remotely.
We have a couple.
Exactly. Which is why I mentioned that. Here we have a much younger group of people. See that, Ralph?
I would, yeah.
I am younger.
I would, I would, yeah, I would say, I don't prefer either way. I prefer that the work of the committee get done. What I would, what I would rather say is, if possible, you know, to make your best effort to meet in person. But if someone feels, you know, if someone feels hesitant, reticent, then our policy allows for them to zoom in. There's no loss of voting rights or anything like that. So then, so then let's, does anyone else have anything to add? Or can we make this motion to sort of state it officially?
Well, and then that's the other part is if there's a particular board that's concerned, maybe they definitely mask. I mean, we're face, face, we're masked. Anybody have a fever, doesn't feel well, please stay home.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Otherwise, our guidance earlier kind of fits the bill.
It's responsible citizenship. So then, so then can, can I make a motion then to say that the Select Board, we make a motion, we move to inform town boards and committees that in their best efforts, please meet in person. But barring any, barring that or with any concern, revert back to our already approved policy.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. We have some discussion.
Little bit of discussion.
Sure.
Please meet in person with perhaps enhanced protocols that go back to the days when we specified distancing and masking.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that can be implied in that. Because especially if we're in a public place and we're, you know, as a person who runs a public building, we wait to hear what kind of new changes will happen because right now we are doing everything that is being asked of us.
And it's a, it's an evolving process.
Yes, sir.
You don't know what, what the rules will be or what the science will be from one week to the next.
So it's been moved and seconded to inform boards and committees to do their best effort to meet in person. Otherwise, they can revert to our remote meeting policy. Is there any more discussion on that? Very well, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much. We move on to item 22023, consider draft warrant and articles for the November 2nd, 2021 special town meeting. And this is a piece of information that will be of interest to everyone in town because it means voting things. I'm going to send it your way again. Eric, give us a little bit of the overview.
Sure. So we have a couple of items that spurred the need for this special town meeting. It was discussed and supported at the Select Board Retreat and the goals that we wanted to move forward, trying to continue to move broadband forward and also trying to address land use changes that were not approved successfully in June, but nonetheless are critically important for our community. And so those two items really make up this warrant. The broadband issue, we have three articles, Articles 2, 3, and 4 that relate to broadband. Generally, Article 2 is the article that allows for, I'm trying to think of the grant funding. Okay, no. So the Article 2 allows for negotiation and the possibility of a contract with a third-party service provider. And that responds to companies like Spectrum and perhaps Acxiom or others that the town could be negotiating with. We've got some promising discussions right now with Spectrum, but we're very early on in that process. So this article would give the Select Board the authority to start the process of discussing those items and to come up with a proposal and then bring it back to voters for final approval for things like, you know, where the money is going to come from, what the scope is going to be, all those fine details.
And that's Article 2?
That's Article 2. Article 3?
May I interrupt for just a moment? Which version are you reading off of? Is this 10 or 11?
This is both. Nothing changes with those two different versions until we get to Article 9, I think.
Okay.
Other than the reference to how many articles are in the warrant.
Article 3?
Article 3 talks about pursuing grants and additional funding and expanding revenues. These are all very important things to consider. We don't know if we're going to get much grant funding, but we certainly will get some. And we need the authority to pursue and expend those funds. And then Article 4 is the most fully developed proposal that we have. And we've been working on that quite a bit over the past several months. And this is for that municipal broadband network that was initially, I guess, voted on in June, fairly well-supported, authorizing and directing the board to move forward with investigating that option. And these are the numbers that we've come up with that I feel very comfortable with. We're going to have to do a lot of public education on it. But this is what it would cost for the infrastructure side of this project for the, with quite a bit of buffer, I'd say probably 20% contingency on mat. And then borrowing to finance it because there really is no other way. That's my really quick summary of those three items and the reason for them. I'll just say that I hope that voters would approve all three of these because it gives the board the ability to continue to investigate and move forward with the things that need to happen schedule-wise for the town to be able to do construction next year sometime. And I'll stop there and ask Catherine what, what she would like to add or any other explanation she might want to offer, being the Select Board lead on, on all of this.
Thank you. And Sean, please pipe in because you were at our last lengthy broadband committee meeting. So there are multiple steps to this process and because we're a town, we can't, and we have, we only have authorization as a Select Board to enter agreements of five years or less, or is it up to five years?
I think it's up to five years.
Up to five years. So four years and less without specific approval from town meeting. We really can't pursue a long-term solution to broadband without asking the voters' permission. And so at this point, this isn't choosing one option. Um, and so at this point, this isn't choosing one option over another. This is offering up the different options that we have available, so that first article number two that's on broadband. Just gives the board the opportunity to be able to negotiate. Not to enter into any agreement, but then to bring it back to town meeting for approval or denial. So we wouldn't be actually entering anything, but we would be negotiating in good faith contracts longer than five years. Um, article three is talking. About us trying to apply for grants and other funding and that might take. Money to apply for those or matching funds to be available, and so we're asking there. On, that's specifically, I believe, Eric, just for the fiber to the home network.
Yes, in this case it is.
Right, because if we enter into a contract just for services with a company, there would be no capital costs. So we wouldn't be getting any grant money or funding for something that's purely a surface expense.
Quite likely, and if we did, it would be small and we could probably handle that under the, the, the more broad grant. Acceptance authority that we do have already.
Right.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't raise any red flags, or it shouldn't anyway.
Um, and then article four is talking about building an actual network, and so the five million dollar cost there. Um, we put it as an over expense expected cost. Um, our cost would be anywhere from three point eight to four point four million dollars as it's projected currently. Uh, we won't know until probably October or November, but we have for a better idea of what that will cost. Um, given the current situation nationwide and maybe even worldwide with materials availability. Um, and the supply chain, uh, we may not be able to do anything even if we have the money. Because the materials may not be there and they may be more expensive, um, the ones that are available. Uh, so Eric thought it was wise to ask for a larger sum as a maximum, that doesn't mean we would spend it. Um, unless it's needed, uh, and that would just provide the infrastructure that would not provide for any actual service. But then you would have a fiber network in town to every location, business and residential. Uh, which would provide the opportunity for forty to fifty years of service. Uh, with nothing needed on the network itself. You would need every seven to ten years to replenish with new technology, the devices that access that. So your switching stations and your modems, um, would have to be updated because technology changes and we understand that. And that cost is built in on the service side, not on this construction phase. This would probably be the most useful solution for the town in terms of. Everything that's going to happen in the future is going to happen over fiber, it's not going to happen over coax. Um, everything new that's being built is being built as fiber. Um, but everything that we have in town is not fiber. Um, that doesn't mean that not fiber is bad, it just means that if you're building new. Uh, looking to the future for the most opportunities and for growth in technology, fiber would be the way to go. The other option that we've talked about that would be more, um, what article two is asking about is say negotiating with Spectrum or another company. There aren't any others really in Maine right now, but, um. If there was some sort of a, uh, program where they would provide service to all residences in town. And what would that cost, um, and how would we pay for it, would it be part of the tax base or would it be part of a? Subscriber fee, um. And anything like that, it comes back to at the end of that article with final agreements and funding requiring voter approval. So anything that we would be working on negotiating. Is not going to be approved by article two, it would allow us to negotiate that and then bring it in the future to the voters. And say, do you want to hire company X to provide service Y in amount Z to the town? But it, so these three articles are meant to give us the opportunity to try to move forward.
That makes sense to me, any questions you guys have?
Sean, anything to add?
No, I think that sums it.
Um.
Well enough, without getting into, yeah, the big weeds.
Right, I mean, we did have a, we did have a proposal from Spectrum that I'm not going to go into details about. If anybody wants to know, they can read the next on broadband committee meeting minutes. Um, but it was a sales pitch, um, it seems enticing at first. Um, and, but it is Spectrum and we've all had a lot of experience with them. Um, and so you have to take that with the idea of can we negotiate with them? Can we work to develop a contract and see what they are going to? Put on the dotted line as we will provide this. Um, it might typically, that's pretty different than the first sales pitch you get for any sort of a, a service or a contract, so.
Very well, um, shall we move on to the next articles here?
Um, yeah, we can do it, we can do that, um, the, uh, the next set of articles, um, and this is where Catherine was referencing the, the, the ten and eleven. In speaking with the planning board, um, there was some concern about, um, bringing forward the community center club article. Uh, again, even broken out, uh, from the other items that are addressed, uh, in this. Um, warrant because of the current situation, the fact that this is currently being. Uh, reviewed and considered by the planning board, um, and the, um, I guess some of the, the, the angst and tension that's, that's been around this. Um, and the fact that there was a lot of negativity and misinformation last time. It's not critical at this point that that issue be resolved. You know, I, I went into this thinking that I really wanted to see all of these things looked at because if it was a good idea in June. Well, it's a good idea now, um, but, um, having spoken with both, uh, the chair and vice chair of the planning board. They're wanting to just take away some of the pressure, um, from, from everything, um, not add fuel to the fire. Um, and certainly that they see that this definition is a problem, it's, it's a little bit vague, uh, and it's been abused. But, uh, it doesn't mean that it needs to get resolved right now because we're currently considering an application. Um, un- under the existing zoning, uh, and that's going to continue, um, through the next couple of months. Um, and, uh, depending on what happens there, it could go on for, you know, much, much longer, uh, but. Um, we have these, uh, additional items, articles five through either ten or five through eleven. That took all of the components in article thirty-eight in June that, that did not pass. Um, and breaks them out into basically functional groupings. Um, so things that relate to a certain section of the ordinance are grouped together. Um, some of the biggest changes and most important, uh, in my, in my view anyway, are the ones that relate to non-conforming structures and. Um, uh, changes in use because. Uh, we have a tremendous pressure right now with people buying, um, shoreline property, people buying inland property. A, a lot of real estate pressure coming into the town right now, um, and all the best stuff's been sold off. Uh, so we're seeing a lot of people coming in, buying substandard lots, substandard structures. Um, and wanting to expand those, um, and box out the corners to make room for, you know, a, a building that may or may not. Fit in the neighborhood, um, or that might be taller than what was existing. Um, essentially having pretty significant impacts on the shoreline and potentially on the environment, um, and ultimately on property values. Uh, if you have a lot of marginal, um, uh, development happening, uh, on property that really isn't quite ready for it. Uh, so there are changes there that I think are important, but there's also just general housekeeping. Um, all of these things, uh, are broken down, so, um, article thirty-eight really had a lot of important stuff in it. Um, and, and it didn't pass, and that's the first time in, I think, you know, forty, sixty years, that a land use article didn't pass. Uh, so there was a lot there that was important, a, a lot of it got set aside. We all felt that it was necessary to bring it back, uh, the question is really, um, if we want to bring all of it back or just most of it. Uh, and try to avoid some of the more contentious issues in order to just move through, through the rest of this more, more smoothly.
Um, good, so the question before us in case, uh, in, in, just to follow along is, do we want to include? Uh, the community sl- center club question, um, on the warrant. I, I'm, I'm open to discussion about that.
Ralph has some.
Ralph, please.
I would move. That we remove the community center club amendments from the warrant question. Given the fact that it is a lightning rod issue and tends to muddy the waters. In terms of public consideration about other valid, necessary amendments. And adjustments to our land use ordinances, and as Eric has pointed out. We certainly don't need it at this point because the present situation is being considered under previous regulations, so. My feeling is that we move ahead with the stuff that's vital, and if this clears the path to make it. More palatable to the people that are going to vote, then we should do that because the rest of these. Components are very important.
Yeah, it's also from the request of the, the planning board, uh, anyone else?
I'll second that, by the way.
Uh, excellent, so I, I would just say this, and I, I absolutely agree with you, Ralph, well said. And I don't think there's anything else that I could add to that except this. The land use ordinance addition about community clubs and, and gathering centers is in fact. A clarifying amendment. Uh, meant only to give a better definition of what these clubs can do. In no way does it limit, eliminate or prohibit community gatherings or club areas. So I think it's important if we're not going to have it there, so folks understand, that's not what this is about, it's clarifying. And I think that it's, it's important to say that. Because there are always ways that things can be misconstrued. Um, and manipulated as we have already seen, it's been, yeah.
It's, it's very well said, and that doesn't mean that at some future point in time.
It can come back.
After we get through the present process, that this. Redefinition and actually enhancement and enabling. Of these types of organizations will not come back before the voters for their consideration.
Absolutely, it's been moved and seconded to accept the warrant with ten items. Uh, to be presented in November, um, uh, is there any other discussion on this? Very well, all in favor, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I have.
No, me, just the.
A, a motion, can we make a motion to extend the meeting for, uh, no longer than ten minutes?
It's been moved and seconded, I second that, all in favor? Okay, ten minutes, um, no, all we're doing is eliminating, um, I'll show you.
So this is the one that's. Dash ten, so it takes out the community center one.
In the packet, it's article eight.
Okay, but there's some other articles that affect that whole situation.
Are there?
Yeah. There's one about, um.
Okay.
Allowing, where do you allow a community center? Specifically?
Well, and I, I guess while you're looking that up, so just stop me whenever you find it. Uh, it's important for everyone in the public to understand that the particular situation on the mill stream road, is that what it's called?
Yes, yeah.
Um, that was begun under a, well, under the current, um, land use ordinance. And regardless of anything that gets passed in the future, it will always be considered under that version of the land use ordinance. Because that's when it began. Uh, before the last.
Right, that's how it's always been.
It would have been article eight that would have been removed, um, and I believe that is the only one that talks about the community center club definition and. Um, the position in the land use table.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's page twenty-four. Where I.
Uh, yes ma'am, that is correct.
That's the one that's being limited?
Um, the, the strike through, uh, do you see it? Oh, I see you're on a different page, that's twenty-five is the table.
So the, the table would, um, um, would be part of that, that would be stricken.
Okay.
And we're not talking about what's striking, what was there, we're talking about in the proposed land use amendments that would be taken out.
That's right, so, so both pages, so you, if you look at the, the heading that says, um, you know, revisions to. Community center club or something like that, twenty twenty-one community center club amendments. Um, those two following pages, both the definition, um, the definition would stay the same. Uh, and the land use table would stay the same, that would not be amended either, so.
Would say which article number would. It's like that should say like article number eight.
Uh, yeah.
Cause I'm like, which article?
And while we're looking that up, uh, the one thing I forgot on the broadband commitment that, uh, we noticed is that. Over the last twenty years, we have spent eight point three million dollars on roads. In our town, um, and we're only looking to spend up to five million dollars to install the broadband. So that's another piece of information that we're gathering.
Thank you, we still have a motion on the floor, uh, so I just want to make sure that Carol feels like she is caught up. And ready to vote.
I just want to make sure it's not mentioned anywhere else in this other one.
Um. Yep.
The one just has to do about setbacks, it does, there's another one that's a land use ordinance.
Here all.
Yeah, they're all part of that. So it's been moved and seconded, uh, to, uh, submit the special warrant in November.
I'm sorry, I had a question on another one.
Uh-huh, sure.
And we're voting to like include all of them or not include all of them?
No, we are going to vote to, uh, eliminate the community and club, uh, to, so it'll be taken out. And then only ten warrant articles will appear to voters in November. Um, for them to vote on, which is the land use ordinance from June, broken out into separate.
So I have a question, but another one I should ask now.
You should absolutely ask now, yes ma'am, please do.
Yeah, we've got a motion for this specific one. Uh, if there are adjustments to other items for consideration, shouldn't that be taken up separately?
Maybe.
I thought your motion was to.
Specific to the center, center club amendments, not, not to other issues. Uh, not, not, not the balance that's on the, on the war.
So you were just saying to remove that one, not to have ten in total.
Indeed.
Okay.
So you had that wrong, I guess.
Yes, I suppose I did, uh, so then let's do this.
Vote on Ralph's motion, and we have someone online also.
Yeah, um, we are looking at number, so then let's do this, let's vote. On, let's have a motion to eliminate article number eight. Okay, does that make sense? So let's go ahead and do that, um, would you like to restate your motion, uh, Ralph?
I move that we remove article number eight from the warrant.
Okay.
As presented in the packet.
Presented in the back.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove article number eight, uh, from our, uh, pat, from our list of warrant articles. Uh, is there any more discussion? Good, all in favor? Thank you very much, article eight will not appear on our warrant in November. Now, did you have other questions about other articles, Carol?
I had a question about why one is like, what brought it to needing a change? And that is the service. Um, business where a service business is restricted in. It was called academic district, so I don't, I don't know what, what kind of service business maybe brought this on or what somebody was trying to do. I don't think it that specific, but it said service business cannot, uh, there's another chart on page twenty-eight. Where service business is prohibited from being in. An academic district, and I guess I'm curious what kind of service business maybe we had approached us to be present in an academic. District that that change needs to be made.
So I, I guess, so the change is actually allowing, um, by permit, um, so it, it went from no.
P is.
No, permitted, so this is actually more permissive, uh, encouraging business. And we did have someone come and say, I want to put something in the academic district. Um, and we weren't able to accommodate that, but that was what spurred this. And so that, this is, again, just like a lot of the changes, um, trying to be, be more permissive and allow, um, allow things to happen where they should.
I read that totally backwards, thank you. I read that totally backwards. Thank you.
That's okay.
And something that I had to learn a long time ago, which we'll all figure out again, is that all of these things are discussed, written, presented, and done at a public hearing with the planning board. And so when these things come to the select board, it's really more of a perfunctory motion that they've already been through their public hearing and people have had a chance to ask about them. We can certainly ask for clarification.
We enable it after public hearings and their recommendation to bring it.
Do you feel satisfied?
Yes.
Motion to approve the other ten warrants as presented on the article.
Second.
Okay. So it has been moved to include all the ten warrant articles in our secret ballot election on November second.
And could I infer that to mean that there would be a yes vote by the select board of the ones that carry that designation?
Yes.
Well, we should explicitly.
We should do that in a separate vote, what do you think?
Sure. Yes.
Yes, we'll do that in a separate vote.
In just a moment.
So what we'll do is we will vote on to include all ten, and then we will vote on whether we approve or not, right, Eric?
Two, three, and four have recommendations.
Okay, sounds good. So it's been moved and seconded to send these ten forward. Will, all in favor? Good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Those ten will follow.
Just Article.
Just Article four.
Just a motion that the select board approve Article four with a select board recommendation of ought to pass.
It's been moved and seconded to add on Article four that the select board recommends. This again is the article about the broadband. Is there any other discussion? Very well. All in favor? Thank you very much.
We have two minutes. I'm sorry to interrupt to do the last thing, so I'll make another motion to extend the meeting for five minutes.
I second that. All in favor? Good. Thank you very much. Go ahead. We have our last item, our last item up for bids. And it is consider signing the bond resolution and other documents associated with borrowing already approved in June. So again, the voters have already approved this. Basically, now we just have to sign the papers. Eric, anything else?
You nailed it, Dennis.
Thank you.
And this is something we've done every, every couple of years for the last several standard paperwork. We have been working incredibly closely with our bond counsel, Barney Martinovich from Pretty Flaherty. She's been doing this for a long time, does very well by us, and we've been through several iterations of this. So I have the documents up on the front table available for you folks to sign. The authorization that would be most appropriate would be to authorize the select board and town manager to sign all of the, all necessary documents associated with the borrowing.
I'll move that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to, oh, sorry, it's been moved and seconded now to. Of course you can, man. There's discussion.
Waiting through the weeds and I see that these bonds going to return a dividend of six percent.
I have to look at that.
And that's a tax-free municipal bond yield, correct?
You know, in total, yes.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Pay attention to what's going on.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Still, they're still valuable devices, financial instruments to buy.
We should be buying them back.
All in favor of signing the aforementioned documents as approved by the voters, please vote now. Aye. And thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you very much.